Call this organizational meeting to order for the Wilmington City Council pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 168-68. The City Council holds its organizational meeting at the first regular meeting in December of each election year. So we're here for this particular meeting, and at this time, I'd like to welcome Father Stephen Clunn of St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church. If you will please come forward to give our invocation, and I want everybody to remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance and the posting of the colors. Mr. Clunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us bow our heads in prayer to the Lord. O most awesome and benevolent Creator, you ordained that your people would not aimlessly wander upon the earth forever, but that from mankind you would elect leaders to guide and serve your beloved children. We pray that you grant us the wisdom to do so with clarity and good judgment, as well as the courage and tenacity to endure the great demands and challenges of this work. Keep us mindful of the true model of servant leadership that you set forth before us yourself as the most compassionate and effective form of public authority. We pray that you will forever bless our Wilmington community and our elected servant leaders. Keep their intentions clean, and their hearts alive and fervent with love for those who they serve, so that they may meet the needs of the faithful. Now and forever to the ages of ages. Amen.
Amen. Please post the colors. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Krista? Bravo! Before I get started, I also like to recognize that we have several elected leaders here, and former elected leaders here in our midst. We have our Chairman from the County Commission, Mr. Bill Ravanbarck. Bill, welcome, and thank you for being here, as well as Commissioner Rob Zappel, who's also with us here this evening. Rob, thank you for being here. Also, our former City Manager, Tony Caudill. I saw him somewhere in here. He just came in, so welcome back. Hey, Tony, there you go. Good to have you back. And of course, our former Councilmember, Ron Sparks, who's also here with us this evening. Thank you for being here this night. Oh, and Ms. Stephanie Walker. I didn't see you, Stephanie, at the very end. Well, we always save the best for last. What can I tell you? Nothing personal to anybody else. But tonight is obviously a very special evening for our community and for our city. We have three new incoming, brand-new council members that are going to be taking their seats here very shortly, and we have three great council members that are departing us. So it's a bittersweet moment. As I've got to know these people over the years, you can't help but to like them and love them. And we've had an opportunity to serve this community for a number of years together, and I believe we've accomplished a lot of great things. We've, I think, demonstrated that we've been able to work very well together, and to demonstrate that we can take on the challenges of a growing region, a growing city, with dignity and with respect for one another in our debate. So I just want to say thank you all for serving. But before we get started into the program, we'd like to introduce a small little video that we've put together for these three outgoing council members. So Dylan, I don't know who's handling all that.
Friends, colleagues, and citizens of Wilmington, tonight we mark the end of an era and express our profound gratitude to three remarkable individuals who have dedicated their time and talent to the service of this city. It is with both respect and heartfelt thanks that we honor the service of council members Luke Waddell, Clifford Barnett, and Charlie Ravanbarck. During their tenure, this council guided the city through significant challenges and presided over some of its most historic municipal achievements. Let's start with the strategic purchase and establishment of our new City Hall at Skyline Center. This move consolidated fifteen city departments under one roof, centralizing services into a single customer-focused location. By acquiring this building at a significant savings compared to constructing a new facility, council ensured long-term operational efficiency while supporting the revitalization of Wilmington's northern downtown corridor. We are grateful to all three individuals whose leadership made this possible and whose work will benefit Wilmington residents for years to come. Councilmember Luke Waddell has served our city since 2021. His leadership has been a driving force, particularly on the WMPO, where his advocacy was paramount in the ongoing challenges of securing funding to improve our transportation system. Luke also sat on the Board of the CFPUA during a time of major improvements to the water filtration system. He served on the UNCW Board of Trustees, creating an essential connection between the city and the university. Throughout his tenure, he is consistently focused on public safety, fiscal responsibility, and responsible growth and infrastructure. And let me just say, if there was anybody that counted the paperclips and made certain that we were fiscally responsible, it was Luke Waddell. Councilmember Clifford Barnett has served since 2017, helping to navigate our city through major challenges, including Hurricane Florence and the COVID-19 pandemic, with a focus on crisis leadership and community resilience. He championed stronger resident recruitment for city boards, committees, and commissions to ensure responsible city growth includes diverse voices. Clifford has championed workforce housing at every step. He also cast many votes toward the advancement of multi-use trails, park enhancements, and road improvements. And I'll never forget watching him sink the first basket in the new MLK Center gym. His kind and generous spirit is contagious, and he brought a genuine sense of humanity to this dais. Clifford Barnett is one of the finest human beings I've ever met. We have had an opportunity to get to know each other over the years, long drives back and forth from Washington, D.C., and I have admired his leadership, not only to his church community, but to the city of Wilmington. So thank you, Clifford, for everything that you have done for our community. Finally, we recognize Councilmember Charlie Ravanbarck, who has served this city for an extraordinary twenty-four years, making him a true fixture of our community for the better part of three decades. He served in two distinct periods, from 1993 to 2001, and again from 2009 to 2025. I've had the pleasure of serving with Charlie since 2009. Charlie helped set the tone for our downtown revitalization in the 1990s and was instrumental in the establishment of the Wilmington Tree Commission. Upon his return to council in 2009, he made an infrastructure management a key priority, serving on both the CFPUA Board and the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority. In recent years, he played a central role in adopting the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code rewrite, efforts that emphasized neighborhood vitality, housing affordability, appropriate density, tree preservation, and improved bike and pedestrian safety. Charlie has always been a consistent advocate for supporting law enforcement and ensuring that they have the tools and training needed to keep our community safe. This city is better off because of Charlie Ravanbarck. And I also want to say, Charlie gave me some great piece of advice many years ago. If you don't stand for something, you stand for nothing. And I want to say thank you to Charlie for all of his advice, for the support he has given this community over many years of dedicated service. Charlie, we love you. Godspeed. Luke, Clifford, and Charlie, you have each cast countless important votes that have shaped Wilmington into the great city that it is today. On behalf of the city of Wilmington and all of its citizens, thank you for your tireless dedication, your leadership, and your unwavering commitment. We wish you all the very best in your next endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate that. I'm going to read some resolutions into the record. First resolution is Item 1, which is a resolution expressing recognition and appreciation by the Wilmington Mayor and the City Council, Charles H. Ravanbarck Jr., for his leadership and commitment in serving the citizens of the city of Wilmington. And I'm going to read it into the record. Whereas Charlie H. Ravanbarck Jr. first took office as a member of the Wilmington City Council on December the 7th, 1993, and whereas since that time, Mr. Ravanbarck has fulfilled six terms, serving our citizens and working to improve the quality of life for all in our city and beyond. And whereas Mr. Ravanbarck during his tenure has served on council committees, including the Evaluations Committee, serving as Chairman 1995, the Appointments Committee, serving as Chairman '97, '98, 2021 through 2025, the Audit Committee, serving as Chairman '97, '98, '99, the Governance Committee, the Ad-Hoc Capital Improvements Committee, the Ad-Hoc Transportation Bond Committee, the Naming Facilities Committee, serving as Chairman 1995, and the Transportation Advisory Commission. Whereas Mr. Ravanbarck has given freely of his time to represent the city in various communities initiatives, as well as serving as the city's representative on numerous public committees and commissions, including the following: Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees Planning Committee, 1999, Wilmington Downtown, Inc., 2011, the Cape Fear Council of Governments, Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, from 2010 to 2025, Legion Stadium Commission. And whereas Mr. Ravanbarck has been a champion for many worthy initiatives and causes that further protect, promote, and enrich our community, including the preservation of financial stability for the city of Wilmington, promotion of economic development, maintenance of neighborhood character, and prioritization of sound public infrastructure. Therefore, be it resolved that on this second day of December 2025, that Wilmington Mayor and the City Council wholeheartedly endorse this resolution conveying a special appreciation to Mr. Ravanbarck for his years of service to the community in exemplary manner, contributing to its growth and development, and positioning it favorably for the future. So may I have a vote of council? All takes just one vote. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, seconded by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye in passing unanimously. Mr. Ravanbarck, the floor is yours, my friend.
I'll go down there?
Yes, sure, by all means.
I know time will be limited. I first want to thank my family for being here. I've got my sons, their mother, my sister, brother-in-law, my brother and favorite sister-in-law. And I saw my two nieces and a great nephew come in a moment ago. So thank you for getting out on this kind of raw evening to come down here for this. I deeply appreciate it. This is old news. It will be real old news in about an hour, I guess, but the real show tonight is these wonderful folks that have prevailed in the recent election and are going to be guiding our city, along with Kevin Spears, and Celeste, and David Joyner, and of course, our mayor. I'm reminded of a comment that Harry Truman made when he first got elected to Congress. He said, "The first six months, I tried to figure out how I got there." He said, "In the second six months, I tried to figure out how the hell everybody else got there." And when you get elected to this, it's kind of like you're looking for somebody to kind of take your hand and lead you along, and they do. The staff is very good, and then you have people that have been there already, and you learn as you go. It's not something that you automatically know what you're doing the day you come in. If you're smart, you let them kind of help you along. There's some people that I've always kind of winged it for the last 25 years, and by doing that, I have left some people out, but there's some people I'd like to thank. Dave Mays being one. I get a lot of calls, just like everybody else on council does, and I know who to call. I know where all the corners are at the city, and I call Dave Mays a lot. He handles it. People like Amy Beatty with Parks and Rec, and the calls we get about something not going just right there. Brian Chambers over at Planning and Development. Anytime you need to know something, the whole office over there is good, but Brian's always my go-to guy, and he always takes my call, and he'll take your call. Catherine Thurston with Code Enforcement. There's sometimes nothing worse than to have an angry citizen, and you call her, and she says, "Would you like for me to call him?" And I go, "Yeah." And she does, and she handles it. And then there's Ms. Sidbury, our city clerk. She'll keep you out of trouble if you listen to her, and she will tell you what she thinks. So Penny is also Clerk of the Year for North Carolina. It happens all the time. It's kind of old hat. Then there's Dawn Grants, the great herder of kittens. She will be calling you to schedule appointments and everything, and if you don't do anything else, just call her back. You know, let her know that you're hearing, because that's trying to arrange schedules immediately or out. It's a real chore, and she does a yeoman's job on that, so help her out all you can. In some ways, I kind of wish that this was taking place in the old council chambers. I spent so much time there. I think I figured it out just one night. Maybe I was bored, and I figured out this is about my 530th council meeting. But the great majority of them were down at the old Thalian Hall, which is now going to... Shane Fernando and his group are turning that place into quite a showplace. And by the way, this young lady, I don't know how many years ago it was, but she was about that big, and she played the violin, and I just was mesmerized. And I talked to her dad tonight, and he said she's going to be here tonight playing. That was absolutely spectacular. I just, absolutely. I've had several interviews in the last 72 hours, and one of the first things people ask me is, "What are some of the things you're proud of that you did?" And I said, "This building. This building is probably the best buy that's ever been had in this county, for sure, and it'll serve the citizens for another 7,500 years, and it's beautiful. We think we did a good job. Parking deck, two pieces of property, and a 371,000-square-foot building. So we're very proud of that. This is something I'm proud of, and the pavilion right behind it is something that everybody gets to use. Our cross-city trail. We're such a bikability, walkability town, and we're really going great guns trying to expand that, and we are." Let's see. I don't want to forget anybody. I'd like to also thank Kathy Luna. Kathy would come along beside me during campaigns. I'm not much of an organizer when it comes to campaign or a campaigner, and she would always say, "What are you doing?" And she'd always jump in and help me, and with her help and other family friends, we would prevail. But she wanted to be here tonight and couldn't. The relationships that I've made over the years with various people that I've served on council with is just unforgettable. Some wonderful, wonderful people, and we're still friends. When I came on in 1993, didn't know squat, and some of them didn't either. But we figured it out. We had a great city manager, and we moved on and got things done. We had two major annexations, which grew the city. They weren't all that popular then, but looking back, there's a lot of things that have happened good to the city as a result of those annexations. And then the two things that I wanted to also mention are the people that I've served with on this council. I think everybody thinks that Kevin and I don't like each other. I admire Kevin. I put him high up on the scale for standing his ground and not acquiescing to anybody that he didn't feel comfortable doing. Celeste is very, very smart, got much experience in other places and brought that experience here. David Joyner is a breath of fresh air. Just very smart, very... He can dive into a problem and figure it out, and those three are going to be quite an asset to this council moving forward. When you first get elected, it's kind of like your first two years of a four-year term, it's kind of like being a freshman and a sophomore. You're feeling your way around, and then the next two years, you really, you know, you pick up speed and go. So 36 years of council experience is going to walk out that door tonight with me, Luke, and Clifford. But this new crowd, they're going to do just fine. Democracy works, and the voters voted, and this is what we've got, and we're going to do just fine. And Wilmington is in such great shape, and one of the driving forces behind that is our mayor. He's the longest-serving mayor, and I think sometimes about the story Dean Smith, and late in the game, put in a sub that never got to play, and he put him in. Kid got the ball, ran straight down, and shot a three and missed the whole backboard. And Dean Smith took him out and said, "What were you doing?" He said, "Coach, I was wide open." He said, "There's a reason you were wide open." And the reason that we are, in my opinion, a great deal of where we are, is our mayor. Bill can work... I've never seen anybody could work a room, bring people together. I get that call, and he said, "Hey, Charlie, it's Bill. How you doing?" I said, "Fine, Bill." And I said, "Let me get my head ready." And we get off the phone. It just makes such good sense. He brings people together, and we've got a lot of things done. This is a nonpartisan board, but there are some ideologies up here that rub together. But he is a master at that, and the city will benefit greatly these next two years and beyond with that same leadership. The other two people I've served with, Clifford Barnett, I was the chairman of the Council of Governments, and we have our annual meeting down somewhere in Brunswick County, and I was supposed to give the opening prayer. And I called, I told Cliff, I said, "How about going with me?" And he did, because I got 500 people in this room, and I stood up and I said, "You know what?" I said, "I'm supposed to give the opening prayer, but I brought a professional with me tonight." And Cliff got up and wowed him, made me look real good. He's... I'd never worked on an elected body like this with a man of the cloth, and I've tried to corrupt him and couldn't do it. He is a true man of God, and doing that, balancing that in politics, is not the easiest thing in the world to do, but he does it. And it's been an absolute treat to get to know Clifford, his family, and to serve with him, and he's got a very bright future ahead of him. The other guy behind me, Luke Waddell, a Citadel graduate, and if you don't know what that means, ask about it. Ask around. His word is sacred, and I've seen Luke stand out there on some issues by himself, and no man's an island, and I admire that. I admire that greatly, and it made me feel good to come along beside him on a number of occasions, to be with him on some of those issues. He does a fantastic job. He's, and like Bill said, he's looking after your pocketbook, folks. That was one of his driving ideals. I think I'm coming to an end here. I told somebody earlier tonight, they said, "How you feel?" I said, "I feel like I'm attending my own wake." It's with mixed emotions that I leave here. I've done this for a third of my life, and I'm very proud to leave the city in the shape that it's in. See Tony Caudill standing back there, my former city manager, and Tony and the manager before him, Sterling Cheatham. We did some great things during COVID, when other places were laying people off and putting people on furlough, the city of Wilmington. We never put anybody out. Everybody kept working. But now I leave you all. We have a shiny new city manager. We have an excellent city attorney, our chief, Zudema, in the back, and his lovely wife, Jenna. We just couldn't be leaving you in better shape. You couldn't design it any better than the way this council has done it, and that's one thing I'm most proud of. God bless you. Thank you.
Next item is Item R2, which is a resolution expressing recognition and appreciation by the Wilmington Mayor and City Council, Clifford D. Barnett Sr., for his leadership and commitment in serving the citizens of Wilmington community for eight years. I'm going to recognize and read this into the record. Legislative intent and purpose, whereas Clifford D. Barnett Sr. was elected to serve on the Wilmington City Council in November 7, 2017, and took the oath of office on December 5, 2017, and whereas since that time, Mr. Barnett has fulfilled two four-year terms, serving our citizens and working to improve the quality of life for all in our city and beyond. And whereas on December 5, 2023, Mr. Barnett was elected mayor pro tem, and whereas during his tenure has served on council committees, including the Naming Facilities Committee, serving as chairman from 2017 through 2025, the Evaluations Committee, serving as chairman in 2021, the Audit Committee, serving as chairman from 2021 through 2025, the Ad-Hoc Capital Improvements Committee, serving as chairman in 2021, and whereas Mr. Barnett has given freely of his time to represent the city in various community initiatives, as well as serving as the city's representative on numerous public committees and commissions, including the following: the Lower Cape Fear River Program Advising Committee, the Legion Stadium Commission, from 2023 to 2025, serving as chairman from '23 through '25, the Hannah Block Historic USO Community Arts Center. And whereas Mr. Barnett has been a champion for many worthy initiatives and causes that further protect, promote, and enrich our community, including the preservation of financial stability for the city of Wilmington, passionate about affordable housing being available to families and safe neighborhoods, promotion of economic development, maintenance of neighborhood character, and prioritization of sound public infrastructure. Therefore, be it resolved that on this second day of December 2025, that the Wilmington Mayor and City Council wholeheartedly endorse this resolution conveying a special appreciation to Mr. Barnett for his years of service to this community in an exemplary manner, contributing to its growth and development, and positioning it favorably for the foreseeable future. May I have a vote on the resolution, please? We have a vote by Councilmember Ravanbarck, seconded by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously. Mr. Barnett, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the privilege to serve you. I'm going to give you four thanks. I want to thank, first of all, thank God for the opportunity to do what he's allowed me to do. Secondly, I want to thank my family. Sleepless nights, missing appointments, listening to the news to see whether or not I embarrassed you or not. Helen, thank you. To my bride, a Baptist preacher's oldest daughter of 36 years, and I know that there were many times that you stayed awake watching me, because I'd be tossing and turning. awake watching me, because I'd be tossing and turning. And I don't have one of those poker faces where if something bothers me, it bothers me. And so I would have to sometimes take phone calls away from her ears, even though she's got radar ears and she hears everything. Take phone calls, and I would take messages and emails and, you know, try to cover. But thank you for, for being there. Thank you, Helen, for just always supporting your dad. And then I want to thank the Warner Temple AME Zion Church. You guys let me pastor the community. Man, that's crazy. That's crazy that you, you would give up Bible study time and, you know, and all of the things that you allowed me to do to serve. And I just want to say thank you. I want to thank my colleagues and thank those who are in staff, all you guys that made us really look good. I congratulate those who have been elected. And, you know, my, my prayers and my thoughts are with you. If there's anything I could do to help you, I promise you I will. I don't know how to say it, but somehow it seems to me, maybe we're stationed where God wanted us to be. That the little place you're filling is the reason for your birth and just to do the things you do. God placed us on this earth. Now, if God had wanted otherwise, I guess he would have made you just a little different of or of better grade. But since God knows and understands all things on land and sea, I fancy that he placed us here, just where he wanted us to be. And sometimes you may get the thinking, as our labors we review, that we'd like a higher task with greater things to do. But come to the conclusion, when the embating is filled, that the post of which God sent you is the post he wanted filled. So as you plod along in your struggles, in the hopes when day is through, was I really necessary to the things God wanted to do? For there isn't any service you can give, which you should scorn, but might be just the reason God allowed us to be born. May the Lord bless you, and may he keep you, and may his face shine upon you, and may he be gracious to you, Wilmington, and to your children, and your children's children, and your children's children on this day forth. God bless you, and thank you for the opportunity.
Before I go to the next resolution, I did forget two elected leaders, and I apologize. Representative State Representative Deb Butler, who was in the back with me and was with me earlier today at an event. And Judge Faceit, who's going to be administering the oath to me? Thank you for being here. Just thank you. Apologize. R three, item R three, resolution expressing recognition and appreciation by the Wilmington mayor and city council to Luke Waddell, senior, for his leadership and commitment in serving the citizens of Wilmington community. And I will read the resolution into the record, whereas Luke Waddell, senior, first took office as a member of the Wilmington City Council on December the seventh, twenty twenty one. And whereas since that time, Mr. Waddell has fulfilled a full term, serving our citizens and working to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens and city. And whereas Mr. Waddell during his tenure has served on councils committees, including the appointments committee, the evaluations committee, the audit committee, the ad hoc capital improvement committee, the ad hoc transportation bond committee, the vision twenty twenty plan committee, serving as chairman in twenty twenty one. And whereas Mr. Waddell has given freely of his time to represent the city in various community initiatives, as well, serving as the city's representatives on numerous public committees and commissions, including the following, the New Hanover County Port Waterway and Beach Commission, the Transportation Advisory Commission, the Wilmington Downtown Inc., Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, Downtown Business Alliance, the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, board from twenty twenty two through twenty twenty five. And whereas Mr. Waddell has been a champion for many worth initiatives and causes that further protect, promote, and enrich our community, including the preservation of financial stability for the city, promotion of economic development, the maintenance of neighborhood character, and prioritization of sound public infrastructure. Therefore, be resolved that on this second day of December twenty twenty five, that the Wilmington mayor and city council wholeheartedly endorse this resolution conveying a special appreciation to Mr. Waddell for his years of service to the community in an exemplary manner, contributing to its growth and development, and positioning it favorably for the future. With that, may I have a motion to approve the resolution. We have a motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by council member Ravenbark. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. Mr. Waddell, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Before anything else, I do want to just, because, because, you know, he wouldn't do it. I want to begin by just taking a couple minutes to recognize Charlie Ravenbark. For more than two decades, six terms, Charlie served the city with resolve, with grit, with humility. Four years ago, when I ran, no one knew who I was, and he would come up to me at the polls. And when people were shaking his hand, coming up to him, he'd say, You need to vote for this guy. You need to vote for, for Luke Waddell. And, you know, if I'd had you at the polls every day, I might not be giving this speech right now. But he's, he's in every sense the epitome of of service, service to his country, serving in Vietnam, and to his city, having dedicated nearly half a lifetime to the city of Wilmington. Everybody knows, we're all familiar with Charlie's repertoire of euphemisms. I call him Charlieisms. He's got a book of them. But when I first took office, he offered me two pieces of wisdom that'll probably be good for a few of you here, here tonight. The first was, do you have a dog? And when I said, Yeah, I have a dog, he said, Good, because some nights you're going to come home, and the only thing in the entire city of Wilmington that loves you will be that dog. So I know, I don't think my golden retriever, Moultrie, is watching tonight, but thank you, because that was true on more than one occasion. And the second, he said, Remember, you're not as great as everyone says you are. He says, But you ain't as bad as they think you are either. And, and, and Charlie, those words helped anchor me during some long nights, some long meetings, when everybody was mad at me, including you a couple times. And I just want to thank you for that guidance and your humor and your example of what it looks like to be a true servant leader. The city owes you a debt of gratitude, and I certainly do as well. So I just want to take a minute and say that. As my last meeting, as a member of the Wilmington City Council, I'll wind up again by saying thank you for trusting me with this responsibility. Serving the people of Wilmington has been truly one of the greatest honors of my life. As the mayor said, I, I didn't realize I was that tight, but I guess I was pretty tight on the paperclips. But it's always been important to me to, to, to watch out for the, for your money, for your tax dollars, and to make sure that they were being spent wisely. Focus on public safety, focus on the core values and the core things, services that the city runs on, responsible growth and infrastructure, protecting the character of this city. I didn't get everything right, and I certainly didn't win every battle. But I'll stand here tonight and say with complete honesty, I enjoyed every minute of these last four years. It was truly a gift. Tried to lean into the hard issues. I tried to ask difficult questions, drove staff crazy. Apologies about that. But I always tried to vote for what I felt was right, and even when sometimes it wasn't easy or popular. Sometimes that meant being a no vote. Sometimes it meant pushing for compromise. Sometimes it just meant fighting for a better deal for the public that we all did up here. But it always, to me, meant approaching this role with, with honesty and with principle. Tonight, as I, as I vacate this seat, Wilmington enters a new chapter. Congratulations to each of you, J.C. and Cassidy, Chikima. You guys ran wonderful campaigns. Oh, sorry. You have a twin? Threw me a curveball here. And, and, and to my colleagues as well, that, that you'll be joining up here, I want to just offer something that is not a criticism at all, but I believe it's perspective that I feel compelled to share. City council is by design nonpartisan. And the intent, as I've always understood it, is that, is to cultivate a diversity of thought at this dais, to make room for various different viewpoints, different experiences, and different approaches to solving problems. I think Wilmington is best served when a variety of voices help shape what guides our community. And the truth is, this city is made up of a lot of people who see the world differently, Republicans, Democrats, independents, libertarians, a lot of people who don't think in partisan terms whatsoever, people of faith, young families, retirees, small business owners, you know, the makeup of this city, who are worried about taxes, growth, safety, neighborhood character, and whether their kids are, you know, affordability, whether their kids are going to be able to, to live here when they grow up. All of them deserve representation. And a nonpartisan body like this, I think, works best when it remembers why that structure exists in the first place, is to make sure no single lens becomes the only lens, not to become myopic, not because there's any bad intentions, but because diversity of thought leads to better outcomes for an organization. Stronger decisions in a city ultimately works together despite its differences. Most of the issues that we face, luckily, aren't partisan anyway. A pothole doesn't have an R or D next to it. Our issues are practical, about problem solving, good management, and advocating for the people. If we stay focused on that, which I'm sure we will, then Wilmington will continue to move in the right direction. So to my colleagues, I just want to say thank you. Bill, you're a legend. You're a legend. And you, you've done a great job of, as a new councilman, including me, and I know you guys will all feel this as well, including you instantly into what's going on in this city. I could be a real pain sometimes. And, and he never tried to circumvent me, always told me what was going to happen, even if he knew, you know, we were going to butt heads about it. And you have got, even when I was mad at him, even when I wanted to ran my head against the wall, I loved him, because he's just so doggone lovable. And that is a gift that not many people have. The city is better because you're in it. And I appreciate your leadership. Start down here. Kevin, I admire you as well. I mean, you stand your ground. We've had a couple battles up here, not too many, but a couple. So that, you're a force, ambitious, and, and, and doing the homework, and reading up on everything that needs to be read up on. David, also agree, breath of fresh air. He's, he was my seatmate, which is probably not fun for him, but I had a good time. Also, just so well read, so even keel, probably a great poker player, because I never knew where his head was at on something until we went to a vote. And then, of course, Charlie, I've already said a lot about you. Clifford, man, really enjoyed the four years we got to work together and the work that you did. Truly a man of God and someone that I admire. To our city staff, can't name you all, but thank you for your professionalism, your expertise, your patience, especially your patience with me during budget cycles and budget meetings. Laura, I think I saw you back there somewhere. Y'all are the continuity of this government. The work you do goes unseen a lot of times, but it never goes unappreciated. The men and women of the Wilmington Police Department and the Wilmington Fire Department, I tried to always advocate for you. I'll continue to do so, not in, not in this role. I think it's very important that this council champions you every chance that we get. Thank you for the service that you bring to this city. To the people of Wilmington, thank you for allowing me to serve you. Whether you supported me or not, you challenged me, you reached out to me, you grounded me, and ultimately you made me a better man, and I thank you for that. Finally, to my family, who were not here tonight, Amanda and our two boys, Luke Junior and Sterling. Luke Junior is sick tonight, he's two and a half, and Sterling's six months old. Thank you. Thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your love, the late nights, the sometimes public criticisms, the missed dinners. You carried more of that burden than I think anybody will ever know. And I really am truly looking forward to this next season of our lives together. I leave this seat with no regrets. I'm full of gratitude for the opportunity the city has afforded me. And while my time here was maybe a little shorter than I wanted, I, I'm not stepping away from Wilmington. I'll continue to invest here, continue to raise my family here, and, and try and be helpful wherever I can in this community to make it better. My hope for Wilmington hasn't changed since the first day I took office. We commit ourselves to a cleaner, safer, more prosperous Wilmington, and that we have the courage and the leadership to make it a reality. Thank you so much for the privilege of serving. It's truly been my honor.
just a couple of more things. I'd like to ask that council member Waddell, Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, and council member Ravenbark come to the front. I just have some plaques to give, and then do one other thing. As each council member leaves, we'd like to present them in recognition and sincere appreciation for what they have done for our community and for our city. And the dedicated service, the public service that these individuals have committed to. These are not easy jobs, and things can get heated at times. But I can assure you that these gentlemen have taken it upon themselves to serve this community with dignity, and with honor, and with respect, and they have done an exemplary job for this community. This community is better because of their service, and I want to thank them. And I'm going to go with the first one here as a presentation, recognition, and sincere appreciation to Luke A. Waddell, senior, council member, December the seventh, twenty twenty one, through December second, twenty twenty five, for exemplary service to the citizens of Wilmington, and unselfish commitment in the best interest of our community, and presented on this second day of December twenty twenty five by the Wilmington City Council. Luke, thank you so much. Next presentation is a presentation in recognition and sincere appreciation to Clifford D Barnett, senior, the mayor pro temp, December the fifth, twenty seventeen, through December the second, twenty twenty five, for exemplary service to the citizens of Wilmington, and unselfish commitment in the best interest of our community, presented this second day of December twenty twenty five by the Wilmington City Council. And I love the Rev. He's just a great guy. I can't tell you how beautiful a person he is. Rev, come on up here. And to my good friend, Charlie Ravenbark, presented in recognition, sincere appreciation to Charles H. Ravenbark, junior, council member, December the seventh, nineteen ninety three, through December the third, twenty oh one, and from December the first, two thousand and nine, to December the second, twenty twenty five, for exemplary service to the citizens of Wilmington, and unselfish commitment in the best interest of our community, presented on this second day of December twenty twenty five by the Wilmington City Council, the longest serving council member in Wilmington history. Charlie, come on up. And Charlie, we have a gift here that Penny just brought to me. It came in by Amazon delivery. It was airlifted here. So, this is to Councilmember Charlie Mark from the Wilmington City Council. I have no idea what it is, but I'm sure it's going to be a great surprise, right? Oh, you want, Charlie?
Charlie, it's a cake.
It's a long story with the cake. It's a cake.
I was raising hell, because we don't have a clock in here. Isn't that nice? I failed to mention my granddaughter is here, old Molly. I just wanted to make sure she got her recognition.
Thank you. Alright, before we go on these three, I'd like the entire City Council to meet me over here by the retiring room door, if you don't mind. Have a little special recognition here. You know, this man to my right has served, longest-serving councilmember in Wilmington's history, and took a lot of significant and important votes. In particular, 95 and 98 annexations were extremely important to the financial health of our community and where it has taken us as a city. So, on behalf of the city of Wilmington, we'd like to dedicate this room to the city's longest-serving councilmember and Wilmington native, Charlie Ravenbark. Over his three decades, over his three decades of public service, Charlie consistently championed initiatives that supported substantial growth, strengthened public services, and enriched the character of the community he loves. He helped guide major investments in infrastructure, house community growth by advancing improvements that strengthened neighborhoods, supported local businesses, and enhanced the quality of life for residents. More than a public official, Charlie has been an engaged member of regional boards, a local business owner, and an outspoken advocate for thoughtful, long-term city planning that has shaped Wilmington's future. Principal leader with steady conviction and collaborative spirit and a deep commitment to the people of Wilmington, Charlie's legacy will continue to influence the city for years to come. This dedication serves as a token of appreciation for his extraordinary contributions and unwavering public service. And I don't know if a lot of people know this, but this man, I don't know for how many years, every Saturday, goes to Bellevue Cemetery and maintains that cemetery. And I just want to say thank you, Charlie, for your public service, buddy. Thank you. Charlie, can you jump up there?
It's where we go to goof off. I've not usually had a loss for words, but I just, what do you say? I mean, it's been wonderful. I can't say anything.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Okay. Next presentation is a report of the 2025 municipal elections, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Penelope Spicer-Sidberry, our city clerk. Sidberry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will read the report of the Board of Elections from the municipal elections held on November 4th, 2025, State of North Carolina, County of New Hanover. We, the undersigned members of the New Hanover County Board of Elections, do hereby certify that we met in the Board of Elections' office on Friday, November 14th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m., and did open and canvass the returns of the chief judge and judges of elections of the votes cast for mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Wilmington, North Carolina, at the municipal elections held on Tuesday, November 4th. We further certify that the City of Wilmington's election was conducted under the applicable laws for cities using the nonpartisan election, and the determination of the election results were ascertained by the majority of votes cast. We therefore have judicially determined the results as follows. Bill Saffo, having received 12,190 votes, is duly re-elected mayor of the City of Wilmington, North Carolina, for a term of two years. J.C. Louse, having received 11,970 votes, is duly elected as a member of the City Council of the City of Wilmington, North Carolina, for a term of four years. Cassidy Santaquina, having received 11,676 votes, is duly elected a member of the City Council of the City of Wilmington, North Carolina, for a term of four years. Chakima Clinton Quintana, having received 11,576 votes, is duly elected a member of the City Council of the City of Wilmington, North Carolina, for a term of four years. State of North Carolina, County of New Hanover, the County Board of Elections for said county have opened, canvassed, and judicially determined the original returns of the election in the precincts in this county, held as above stated, do hereby certify that the above is a true abstract thereof, and contains the number of legal ballots cast in each precinct for each office name, the name of each person or choice voted for, their party affiliation where applicable, and the number of votes cast for each person or choice for the term name, for the item name. This the 14th day of November, 2025, the members of the Board of Elections, Jamie Getty, Chairman John Lennon, Secretary Morgan Derrick, Member James Battle, Member, and Beverly Seck, Member. At this time, I would like to introduce the Honorable James H. Fason III, District Court Judge, to administer the oath of office to the re-elected mayor, Bill Saffo.
First, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate you on another successful run.
Thank you.
On behalf of my wife and me, and of course, my daughter who's here, and thank you for the opportunity to allow our family to just show our support and love for you. And congratulations again for this great run. We know that going forward, the city of Wilmington will achieve new heights and great depths, and looking forward to the days ahead, and wish you Godspeed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me, and state your name.
I.
I, Bill Saffo. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the State of North Carolina.
Of the State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor and councilmember.
As mayor and councilmember.
Under the council-manager form of government.
Under the council-manager form of government.
For the city of Wilmington.
For the city of Wilmington.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
All right.
God bless you. Well, it's a big night tonight, real big. I want to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening. It means a lot to all of us that are serving. I want to say thank you to a couple of people here tonight. First of all, I want to thank my family. I'm not Bill Saffo without this family. And I have been blessed to be born into a great family, a loving family, and I still have my mom and dad, and that's a blessing in itself. And I've always said, true wealth comes in two forms, your family and your friends. And you should always cherish it with all your body and all your fiber. I want to thank my brothers and sisters, Nick, Tony. Tony looks like me. He always gets blamed for me, but Tony, thank you. My sisters, Arjuna Sophia, my nieces, my nephews. I just want to say thank you, guys. You guys rock. John Frank, my brother-in-law, the most conservative man in the family. I want to thank Louise McCall. Louise has been with me since the very beginning, since this journey began way back in 2003, and I can't even believe that Louise had dark hair, and so did you. But I thank you for your advice and counsel, but most importantly, I thank you for the way you make certain that I'm always grounded, and that you always tell me the truth, whether I like it or not. And I appreciate that. I know we've gotten a lot of fights over it, but I really appreciate that. I want to thank all the people, the volunteers, the people that canvassed the neighborhoods, the poll workers. There were so many people that were involved in this campaign. I want to thank you. Did a lot of hard work out there. I want to thank Jill Hartman and Rachel Hatfield. You folks really put a great team together and did a lot of hard work for a lot of folks, and I'm just spectacular. It's unbelievable what you folks were able to do. It's amazing. I want to thank Tim Merritt. I know Tim, I don't know if Tim is here tonight, but I want to thank him. I want to thank Diana Hill. She was in my ear all the time about different things over time. Ellie Klein, do I see there? Ellie, thank you for being here today. And all the people that contributed to my campaign, thank you for believing in me and supporting me. I want to thank this city's staff. We're only as good as this city's staff. The people that work for the city of Wilmington are the unsung heroes of our community. We may be the face of it, but it's the men and women of this city government that makes this city what it is and how it takes. Over 1,100 people that work for the city of Wilmington, and they do outstanding work. I mean, they pick up the trash, cut the trees, maintain the lawns, and the parks, and all the things that we love to see. They are the first responders. They come to your house in need of an emergency. These people work long hours. They do great work, and they have positioned this community to be one of the great cities in America that people are talking about. A lot of people are talking about Wilmington, North Carolina, and what we've been able to do here. I want to thank our new city manager, Becky Hall. She's just been here a couple of months, but she's already made some pretty significant strides, and we're looking really forward to working with you. I know we had a long list of people that we interviewed, and she came to the top of that. So, Becky, I look forward to working with you and continuing to work with you. I know we've got a lot of things on our plate. Also, our city attorney, Meredith Everhart, thank you, Meredith, for keeping us out of trouble. Penny Spicer, what can I say? I think you may be the longest-serving clerk in North Carolina history. So, I mean, we've got a lot of firsts here tonight, but has done a phenomenal job for our community over many, many, many years. Don Grants, that we've been talking about, I just happen to be, Don Grants happens to be the mayor. I just happen to be, he's out in her office. She takes care of me, but she also takes care of the six other of us that sit up here, and does an extraordinary job. She could write a book of all the escapades and things that she's had to do for all of us over the years, but she's done an extraordinary job, and I just want to say, I couldn't do this job without her. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the three councilmembers that I have served with, that have served this community and city. I want to thank them for their public service. Mayor Pro Tem Clifford Barnett, Councilmember Luke Waddell, and also Councilmember Charlie Ravenbark. Thirty-six years of combined experience, and they did an extraordinary job for this community. We helped move this community forward in many different ways. You guys made it different. The Cross City Trail, the amphitheaters, the Riverwalk, the Convention Center, which people at the time said we shouldn't do, and now we're talking about expanding it because it's so wildly successful. The revitalization of downtown Wilmington, what we've been able to do down here over the last couple of years, I mean, it's just been outstanding. The purchase of the Skyline Center, as Charlie mentioned, I mean, this was a huge coup for the city of Wilmington. Purchased it for 68 million, we're down to 41 million already. We've got $30 million worth of property left to sell. We'll be in this building for $10 million. That's a pretty good deal. These folks serve and did a tremendous job for our community. Tonight is historic, to say the least. I mean, it's a very historic night for the city of Wilmington. For the first time in the city's history, the majority of the council will be women. Long overdue, I must say. We can't ever say good old boys anymore, right? But I want to say welcome to Chasee and Cassidy, Chakima. I know you folks are going to do great work. I've seen you in the debates and in the forums and your platforms, and I know you're eager to get to work and work hard, and I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. You know, this is an old city. It was incorporated in 1739, before the Declaration of Independence was signed. And it's a city and region that is changing, and it's growing. And whether we like it or not, people have found Wilmington, North Carolina, and they have migrated here from all parts of the country and even the world. The challenges that we're going to face in the coming years will be exciting, for sure. They're going to be difficult, and they're going to be very complex, extremely complex. Sometimes I feel that the voters want something instantaneously, and sometimes it takes time to get things done and resolved. The decisions that we will make will be evaluated and debated, and at times, I'm sure that it's going to be spirited. But that will be done with respect and acknowledgement of people's perspectives and views. I think that's critically important. And today, when so much is talked on social media, we have to respect each other in respect to debate. We may have differences of opinions and even thought, but at the end of the day, we have to make a decision to move this community forward, whether we're on the winning side or not. I think it's critically important that we handle it with dignity and respect for each and every opinion. Every council I have served on has had but one goal, or several goals, and that goal was to make this city a better place to live, raise a family, open a business, and protect what we cherish all, our quality of life. And those goals are not easy to achieve. Those goals have propelled Wilmington into the national spotlight as one of the best places to move to. If you look at any publication, and most publications around this country on a monthly basis, you will find Wilmington, North Carolina, has been identified as one of the top spots to move to. That did not come about by accident. The city, working with many different organizations, nonprofits, county government, which also plays a very important role in what we do here locally, our state government, which also plays a very critical and important role, and our federal government in Washington, as well as small and large businesses, created an atmosphere of getting things accomplished, and we were able to accomplish a lot of things. Although we have had much success over the years, that success is tied to the fact that city government can and will make tough decisions to ensure that our future always remains city government can and will make tough decisions to ensure that our future always remains bright. I can guarantee you that this incoming group of elected leaders are up to the task of getting things done. We have a lot to do, and we are ready to get to work. I pledge to you what I've always pledged every time I've ever been elected. What the ancient Greeks recited over 2,000 years ago, known as the Athenian oath, that Greek city-state that determined what all cities were going to look like. And the quote says, "We will transmit this city not only not less, but better and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." Thank you all. Godspeed, and let's get to work. Thank you very much. I'd now like to recognize the Honorable Deb Butler of the North Carolina House of Representatives to give the oath to newly-elected Councilmember J.C. Lyle.
Well, good evening, everyone. I want to let you know that it is my privilege and honor to serve you all as representative to House District 18. I also will tell you that I lobbied for this job because I am so excited at this slate of new leadership. It is truly historic. I also wanted to take just a brief moment of personal privilege to acknowledge the passing of Mrs. Bertha Todd today. A trailblazer in this community who paved the way for, I think, these new council members to serve this community. So thank you, Ms. Todd, for being a mentor, a trailblazer, and a unique member of this community that we will surely miss. So if I can have you come forward, J.C. And I don't have this memorized, Judge, like you. I haven't done it quite as many times. If you will, please, raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I...
I.
State your name, please.
J.C. Lyle.
J.C. Lyle. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
...the Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
...of North Carolina...
Of North Carolina.
...not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...as Wilmington City Councilmember.
As a Wilmington City Councilmember.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, J.C. I'm going to give you this, and she's got stuff. And Penny has us under control, so do what she tells you to do.
Are you going to speak? Are you willing to speak?
Yeah. Ms. Berry, will they be making some remarks as sworn in? Okay, please go ahead.
This is nice. Thank you. Wow, what a night. So many people around this town, so many people in the life of the city and so many people in my life have brought me here today. I couldn't possibly keep you here all night to thank everyone, but I do want to mention that because my mom and sister and family are having a watch party at home, that I'm so grateful for the values that they instilled in me. Everything that I do public service-wise is because my mom taught me that. And from a very young age, and our faith drives us to serve our communities and love one another. And so that is kind of my guiding light. She's my guiding light. And my husband and stepchildren and a lot of friends that you saw get up with me have been such great influences and such great supporters of the campaign. So many campaign volunteers led by Jill and Rachel out there knocking on doors, and it's just overwhelming to think about all the folks that were out there working hard and share the same vision for Wilmington. And it's a call to action for me because I don't want to let anybody down. So it really, it's really inspirational and motivational for me. And of course, all of the city leaders that have come before me, especially the city council that appointed me to the planning commission, and I see some fellow planning commissioners here, because the planning commission really helped me learn about how government works and toughened me up a little bit. Because we're the first ones to hear why people don't like this proposal that's in front of us, to change a land code or build a new project. And since we're here to roast Charlie tonight, I thought I would mention that he was one of the people that appointed me to the planning commission. He always said, "You know, the planning commission is so important, it's the tip of the spear because you all see him first." And I always remembered that when I walked into city council meetings, and there was security guards there and a metal detector, and we got nothing like that at City Planning Commission. So we were the tip of the spear, but it taught me a lot. And so I'm excited and equipped and ready to lead in the city council role. And a leader, of course, by definition, does nothing without a team, does nothing without a community. And so thank you to the city staff, and I look forward to working with you all even more closely. A lot of folks that I met during the campaign had gotten discouraged over the years, whatever they were discouraged about in the world, or they felt like their vote didn't matter, their efforts didn't matter. You know, in post-COVID, it's hard sometimes to keep our spirits up. And so I wanted to share with you what keeps my spirits up when I get discouraged. And I didn't memorize my poem, but these are a few words that are commonly attributed to Mother Teresa that I thought would inspire you, because we need you. The election is over, the campaigns are over, but we still need you to stay engaged with your community. And we're so proud of all the folks that are out there on boards and donating to causes. And so we need you to keep those things going. And so this is, it's from a poem called "Anyway." "If you do good, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Do good anyway. If you're successful, you'll win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. Honesty and frankness make you vulnerable. Be honest and frank anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough, but give the world the best you've got anyway." Because we don't do these things for other people, and we don't do these things to change minds, or we don't do them because of who other people are, we do them because of who we are. And so stay who you are and continue to give your best to Wilmington. And thank you again for your trust with this amazing, amazing city.
House of Representatives to newly-elected Councilmember Chikima Clinton Quintana.
And I will have everyone here know that I called to verify the pronunciation of this name, to make sure that I got it correct. And if you didn't know, there is someone who looks an awful lot like Chikima. All right. Who's got the Bible?
I got it.
All right, very good. Please put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me, please. I...
I.
And state your name.
Chikima Clinton Quintana.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
...the Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
...of North Carolina...
Of North Carolina.
...not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...as Wilmington City Councilmember.
As Wilmington City Councilmember.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good evening. Earlier today, we lost a Wilmington icon. And I stand on the words of Bertha Boykin-Todd, who once said, "I refuse to accept the idea that some people are entitled to freedom and others are not. Tonight, I accept this office, committed to fairness, equity, and opportunity for every I am filled with gratitude and humility, and I am deeply honored by the trust you have placed in me. This moment is not about one person, it is about the city that believes in what's possible when we come together with determination, purpose, and passion." Thank you to my husband, Rick, for standing with me with every step of this journey. Thank you to my family for your sacrifices, your love, and your patience, and to my twin sister, who you've all met. Shauna, I love you and thank you for always being my biggest cheerleader. To my incredible campaign team, James, I don't think he's here tonight, but I know he's watching, Marlene, Bernice, Lynn, Atiba, Nancy, thank you. You all have been incredible. To Jill and Rachel, you already know, and April, I can't forget about April Farr. You guys have been instrumental in so many things during this campaign, and I appreciate To every volunteer who gave countless hours with unwavering faith in this vision, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. But to my supporters, my neighbors, and every voter, I see you, I hear you, I thank you, and I promise to serve you with integrity, honesty, transparency, and hard work. And to my sigma soras, I thank you because we are truly our sister's keeper. I'm committed to being the councilwoman that listens, one who learns and one who leads with compassion, and together we will continue to work to make Wilmington a city where every voice matters, where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you to the city staff. My God, y'all have no idea how much they have done already since the election. Thank you to our existing council members. I appreciate you and the role that you have played and done for so long. Charlie, I love you, man. Luke, I have the utmost respect for you. I'm trying not to hear Clifford over there by you. He's not my favorite person because he loves my twin sister more. It's an inside joke, y'all. I do love Clifford. Luke, I just wanted to say thank you. I know there's this wonderful picture of the two of us and you conceding. I'm cherishing that forever, but I just want to say thank you for being so respectful and coming up to shake my hand that night, but not just my hand, the other ladies as well. Thank you. To everyone, thank you for believing in me as we work harder respectfully and all things towards greater service and greater progress. God bless you.
I'd like to also recognize again the Honorable Deb Butler for the North Carolina House of Representatives to minister the oath to newly-elected Councilmember Cassidy Santa Guida.
And I want you to know that Cassidy is last because this little elf was in a play tonight. Is that right, Lyra?
Yeah, just a performance.
She had to do a little performance, and so we wanted to make sure that the actor got here in time to swear her mother in. So, all right. Place your hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Cassidy Santa Guida.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
...the Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
...of North Carolina...
Of North Carolina.
...not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...as Wilmington City Councilmember.
As Wilmington City Councilmember.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you all for hanging in there for one more speech. I like to talk, but I promise I will keep this short. And thank you all for being here to celebrate this historic new chapter for our city. I want to start by saying thank you to my parents, Scott and Jan, for raising me to believe in the power of service and hard work. My dad spent two decades on staff with the city of El Paso. And he taught me what good city government can do for a community, while my mom proved that a strong woman who works hard can accomplish just about anything. Mom and Dad, I know that you all were able to enjoy your life of retirement for about two seconds before I pulled our family into the world of politics. So thank you for your sacrifices, your ongoing support, your encouragement, and all the free babysitting. Thanks to my daughter, Lyra, for your kindness and your patience and for inspiring me to do the work to ensure Wilmington is a city you'll always be proud to call home. Thank you to my best friend, Dory, for convincing me to move across the country and build a life and a career in a new city that I could afford. Almost a decade later, I'm truly honored to be in a position where I can help ensure others in our city have the same opportunity. Thank you to all of my family and friends, colleagues, supporters, volunteers, and all of the elected leaders who serve our community. I recognize that I am a single thread in the fabric of our city. And you all show me daily that commitment, hard work, and connection strengthen all of us. Finally, and most importantly, thank you to the voters who have trusted me with this opportunity to serve. I can't promise that we'll always agree on everything, but I can promise that I will put what's best for our city and everyone in it at the center of every decision I make. Now it's time for us to get to work. And with the mayor, my fellow council members, our amazing city staff, and all of you, let's make some good things happen for Wilmington. Thank you.
I must say, we look pretty good. Okay. Our next item of business is to announce the election of the Mayor Pro Tem. And at this time, I will call for nominations from the floor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Joyner.
As we turn our attention to the selection of a new Mayor Pro Tem for, we have a colleague who has served or is getting ready to begin his seventh year on the city council here in Wilmington, who was born and raised in Wilmington, is a proud Hogard Viking, UNCW Seahawk. I could read out the long list of his committee assignments and chairmanships from council, as well as his involvement, and deep roots in our community, and note his seniority on this board. But I would be remiss if I didn't also add that in addition to serving on council, working full-time and running a campaign two years ago, he has quietly been working on and is getting ready to complete his master's in public administration, which shows his dedication not only to the public service charisma and sometimes political aspect of elected office, but also his commitment to getting it right when it comes to the details and the day-to-day minutia of the city's business. I hope the council will unanimously join me in selecting Councilwoman Kevin Spears as our next Mayor Pro Tem. And I move his nomination at this time.
We have a motion, Councilmember Joyner, second.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Quintana. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes unanimously. Mrs. Spears.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you, Shakima. Thank you, Salete. Thank you, Cassidy. Thank you, J.C. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Wilmington. Only got one thing to say. I called Clifford earlier, and I said, "Don't make us cry." But I'm gonna say this. If you want to make God laugh, tell him your plan.
Our next item of business is our Consent Agenda. Items one through two are any, one of those that any council member would like to hear separately, if not, what are the wishes of this council in respect to the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve, Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our resolutions. Item R4 is a resolution appointing A. Penelope Spicer Siberry as our city clerk. And I guess we'll have to administer the oath, or do I need to take the vote first? I'm gonna go ahead and take the vote first. I'm gonna ask for a motion from council in respect to the approval. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item passes unanimously. At this time, I will administer the oath to Ms. Siberry. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, A. Penelope Spicer Siberry.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
That I will support and maintain
And I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Discharge the duties of my office
Discharge the duties of my office.
As city clerk
As city clerk.
Under the council-manager form of government
Under the council-manager form of government.
For the city of Wilmington.
For the city of Wilmington.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our next item is item R5, which is a resolution appointing Meredith T. Everhart as our city attorney. What are the wishes of council? We have a motion to approve. Councilmember Joyner, seconded by Councilmember Santa Guida. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item passes unanimously. At this time, I will administer the oath of office to our city attorney, Ms. Everhart. Raise your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. I state your name.
I, Meredith T. Everhart.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
That I will support
That I will support.
And maintain
And maintain.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Discharge the duties of my office
Discharge the duties of my office.
As city attorney
As city attorney.
Under the council-manager
Under the council-manager
Form of government
Form of government.
For the city of Wilmington
For the city of Wilmington.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. The last item of business is item RP1, Report of Counsel's Appointments, Committees for Boards and Committees. And I will ask if there are any questions from the city council. If not, what are the wishes of council? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Spears, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item passes unanimously. Congratulations. This concludes this meeting. We are now going to have a reception in the lobby. And hopefully, everybody will stay around and have a few refreshments with us and talk to us. And glad to see everybody. With that
Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, if council will just hold tight, there is a photographer coming in to do a group photo. So if you just bear with us, folks can go ahead out and enjoy the reception, but I need the council to stay in place. Thank you.
Okay. I feel like I'm at a wedding. We have to take the old pictures for, okay. All right. With that, we stand adjourned.